I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education. Regular meeting, sorry. Tuesday, January 7th, 2022, to order. It is 5:30. If everyone could please remember to silence all cell phones. At this time, if everyone could, in lieu of the invocation, we will have a moment of reflection for you all to use as you see fit. Thank you. If everyone could now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and Posting of Colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome tonight. Let's have another round of applause for the New Hanover Singers. We are also lucky enough tonight, in a last-minute substitution, to have Ms. Hannah James, the Director of the Choir, sing with us this evening. So, thank you. Lovely. We're going to have the students introduce themselves now and tell you their grades.
Hi, I'm Lucas Mead, and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Brady. I am a senior at New Hanover High School.
I'm Emily Lane. I'm a sophomore.
Let me just scoot in here. Also, tonight, we had the honor of having the Laney AFJROTC with us, and I'd like them to now tell us their names, grade, and rank.
Hi, I'm Cadet Major Nom, and I'm a senior at EA Laney High School.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Clutter. I'm a senior at Laney.
I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Williams, and I'm a senior at EA Laney High School.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Clyde, and I'm a junior at Laney.
Good evening. I'm Cadet Captain Simmons. I am a senior at Laney.
One more round of applause for our students. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the students and to the teacher that also helped sing. That was beautiful. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Any discussion, changes or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Special meeting minutes from December 10th and December 19th.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Item four, recognition of achievement. Ms. Clegg, is that you?
Tonight, we will actually begin by recognizing our board members tonight. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we want to thank each of you for your service on behalf of the students, staff, administrations of New Hanover County Schools. The Public Relations Staff has enlisted the help from Murray Middle School's Green Arts Club. The club is one of the most popular mastery classes at the school and brings awareness to recycling by upcycling materials and objects to make something beautiful. The club uses materials including beads from broken costumes, costume jewelry, bottles, and paper towel tubes to make things such as lanterns, cheese trays, and ornaments. At your desk is a special gift prepared by the students from the Murray Green Arts Club at New Hanover County Schools. We'd like to thank Lori Patterson, the Visual Arts Teacher at Murray, for helping organize this year's gifts. We encourage you all to visit her students and to see how they make their crafts and learn more about the program and other environmental-friendly initiatives at the school. We appreciate your commitment to the continued success of New Hanover County Schools. All right. Moving on to community partnerships. Our community partnership presentation today comes from Chick-fil-A. I would like to introduce Carrie Branson, Marketing Director of the Chick-fil-A at Monkey Junction, who will share with us how they support schools in our area.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight, all of you. Excited to be here. Okay, so I know a lot of people know about some of the programs that Chick-fil-A offers, but every Chick-fil-A is owned individually, so that means we all make decisions as individual stores. We do have a couple of things that we have in common, though, and so that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. There are always more opportunities out there. I encourage you to reach out to your local Chick-fil-A marketing director. If you don't know who they are, I'd be happy to get that information to you, and Crest does have my info as well. All right. So, there is no better way to serve our community than to add value to our schools. When we support our students, teachers, and local families, we are creating healthy relationships and loyal partnerships that will have lasting benefits from all future interactions. That is kind of the motto that the Chick-fil-A's in Wilmington have decided to take. That is why we put so much into our schools at the local level. And since we are owned individually, we're able to put more into the local level than we are into anything else. A lot of people do understand the fundraising programs. I did want to briefly highlight them. One of the ones that we do is a Chick-fil-A Spirit Night, day or week. Every school does it differently. Every Chick-fil-A does it differently, and it really depends on what the school needs. So, one of the first things I always ask the school when we come up there is, "What are you trying to do to raise money for?" One of the things I was surprised about many years ago was Mary C. Williams came up to me, "We need money for a track." I said, "Okay, what do we need?" And we started trying to figure out how to raise that money. I love partnering with people when they come to me with something they actually need versus just saying, "Hey, I want your help. Let me know how I can help you," and we'd be happy to figure it out. So, one of the easiest ways is doing that Spirit Day, but it may be something that you need a whole week for. Maybe a lot of your people, like some of the schools in downtown Wilmington especially, they have people that work second, third shifts, so going to a Chick-fil-A from 5:00 to 7:00 at night isn't going to help them to do that type of fundraiser. And maybe something we need to give it an open day for or a whole week for, and that's kind of what we look at. Another one that we've started recently is our mobile ordering fundraiser. This is a very easy one. Monkey Junction, the restaurant I work at, we only do mobile ordering fundraisers at this point. It means that you have to place an order through our app in order for you to get the percentage back. So, every school gets a specific percentage back, and again, it is based on each Chick-fil-A. Mine does 20% for schools. And so, any orders that come in at night, we would give you 20% of that to go back to whatever you're trying to build towards, meaning if you're wanting a track, we're going to give you money to do a track. If you're needing to raise money for food for an event that you're doing, or to feed a team that's going out of state, or doing cross-country, or doing a different type of event, then maybe it's food we're raising money for. So, 20% would go back, and we'd apply those funds to food to be donated to their school as well. Chick-fil-A product resells, this is what many people are aware of because it's in your concession stands. So, we sell the food to your booster clubs, to your athletic organizations, to whoever needs it, and then y'all resell it for a little bit more so that you can make some money. We also do usually give you a set rate rather than doing whatever it is in the restaurant, so we're not going to charge you that extra 50 cents, or that 10 cents, or whatever it may be. We're going to keep it low for you. Another new one we have is our Mini Plush Cows. I'm sure you saw these over the holidays. We do sell those Mini Plush Toy Cows out of our restaurant. Those sign boards can actually be customized for your schools independently. And so, that's a new one where you can actually sell those at the school or in the school store and raise some money off of them as well. One that started as of Monday, so yesterday, is a Buy One, Give One campaign. And this is where a lot of our students are trying to help charitable organizations and volunteer in the community. And so, what we've started is the school buys one, let's say buys a sandwich, then we're going to give them a sandwich, and it would go to whatever they're fundraising for. Another is a Day of Sweetness. We recognize that our cookies are one of those things that we, that the schools can actually make a pretty good profit off of, so we've started doing one for our chocolate chunk cookie sales as well. Some of the other programs, I'm just going to go through very quickly, are Chick-fil-A Catering. This is a great opportunity to serve teachers. A lot of our schools do give free meals to teachers or something like that throughout the school year. It is just available upon request more than anything else. We also have a school lunch program that not many in New Hanover County take, actually do. So, these options are perfect for field trips, for class parties, for anything that's going outside of the restaurant, out of the school, that's not in your cafeteria. We do have options that are USDA-approved for the nutrition standards set forth by North Carolina by the USDA and by New Hanover County to make sure they are getting that proper ratio of chicken, fruit, vegetables, whatever it may be. Some of the activities to help in our restaurants are celebrations of their accomplishments. So, we offer a couple of field trips. One is our backstage tour. We've had Ashley High School at our particular location, as well as Cape Fair Academy, come out and do a backstage tour. And what this means is they go into kitchen safety. They learn about how to keep food hot, how to keep food cold, what those temperatures look like, as given to us by the USDA and FDA. We do post-prom events, fifth-quarter events, yearbook signing parties, and of course, another one is our Chick-fil-A Cows on Break. Now, our Chick-fil-A Cows on Break is actually an essay contest, so we work with the teachers and the schools, and we give kids a free cow, plush cow, to take on their adventures. They didn't have to write up a report, an essay, or whatever the teacher wants in return, so that is something free for them. It's kind of encourages them to take pictures, to write about, to explore their artsy side. Students love it when the Chick-fil-A cow attends a school event or is available for pictures. If permitted, we launch Mini Plush Cows and other goodies into the crowd, wherever that may be. This is a great way to create some new school memories that will be talked about for years to come. Inviting the cow to sporting events and PTSD events, requesting donations of food or merchandise for these activities, we do allow that. If you want to give something out to reward some of those kids that have a solo in the choral concert at the end of the year, or that have really gone above and beyond, this is an opportunity for that as well. Classroom parties, we do ask that you put in a donation request for this, but we honor them on a first-come, first-served basis, and all of our schools do get the right of, basically, we serve all schools before we serve our community. So, if you put in a donation request, we're going to give you as much as we can before we go into a community partner. Some of the character and wellness educations that are offered for New Hanover County are the core essentials. These talk about the different values and moral values. It's great for kindergartners and pre-K schools. I'd be happy to talk to anyone about it that's interested. Another one is Wipe Out Germs. This goes into hand hygiene and teaching kids how to wash their hands effectively, and it does give them rewards and things along the way. Chick-fil-A Leader Academy. All of the high schools, public high schools in New Hanover County are offering Chick-fil-A Leader Academy at this point in time with their local Chick-fil-A restaurant. It's a wonderful organization. It is set up so that the kids in the, it's basically an after-school program, and the kids learn leadership skills while giving back to the community. So, most notably, Ashley High School this past year, for, I think their November Do Good Project, they were able to do Toys for Tots, and they went from day one through the entire campaign, meaning that they collected toys at the schools, and then they also went to Toys for Tots and helped give them out, pick them up, and distribute them. So, they got to see it from the entire way around, Whole 360 for Toys for Tots campaign. And I think that was a very eye-opening for them. I know they got a lot out of it. Some of the teacher and student opportunities that we offer are School Supply Drive. These are things that would happen before the school year begins, so we like to talk about those in April or May and get them set up on the calendar. We like to do school supply drives for those lunchboxes, for book bags, for notebooks, for pencils, for anything that both the teachers or the students may need. So, maybe teachers really need some more paper towels, some more art supplies. We could do a school supply drive for that as well. Study Station is something we offer for any teachers that are having some difficulty with some of their students. They want to give them some more time to study, some more time that's private, one-on-one. Then we do offer that at Chick-fil-A's. You can actually set up a time, come in, and we'll set up a little study session, Study Station, where you have access to a TV, a laptop, anything else you may need to help the kids get ready for their exams, or just get caught up. And we do offer that with some complimentary snacks. That's completely free. Student Award Recognition, we like to do this in different ways. Some people do a catered lunch, so at the end of the year, anyone who wants to be recognized, those students get a free catered lunch, and it's at Chick-fil-A, or maybe it's at the restaurant, or at the school. One of the things we have is Pine Valley Top Tigers. They actually take a limo to Chick-fil-A every quarter, or every time there's a report card for anyone who had outstanding performance or who were able to have perfect attendance during the time of that season. Chick-fil-A Book Club is used to encourage reading at any age. We do offer bookmarks like your local library. This can be something that's done during the summer or during the school year, and those do have rewards as well. Is there anything the board would like further information on or details about?
Just waffle fries.
Just some waffle fries? All right. Well, I did have a short, excuse me, I did have a short video. It just talks about the way we help teachers, but I think we've covered most of that for you, so I won't bother you with any more of the time. Thank you for having me this afternoon. Oh, it's our pleasure. Thank you so much.
Our next presentation will be our school showcase video. This month, we are pleased to present the Principal of Lake Forest Academy, Ms. Debbie Stout. She will share a video highlighting how her program supports at-risk youth and mental health services and smaller student-to-adult ratios for teaching essential social skills and replacement behaviors to be successful in the classroom while providing support and emotional development.
Wow. I am Debbie Stout. I'm the principal of Lake Forest Academy. This is Amanda Hellman. She is our day treatment program director. Thank you for having us tonight, and I'm warning you ahead of time, you told us to have fun with the video, and that's exactly what we did. Just a little bit about us. We are a day treatment facility, alternative school. We serve students from all over the county, kindergarten through eighth grade. It is a referral process, and you have to meet the guidelines for the state as far as day treatment goes. Right now, we have about 53 students. Our capacity's around 65. We have some grade levels that are much heavier than others right now, but we're not quite at our cap. Trying to think of anything else we need to tell you that we didn't tell you in the video. I tell you one. Let's watch the video, and then if you have questions. Does that sound good?
Vision. The vision of Lake Forest Academy.
Into ensure that all students
Are afforded equitable opportunities.
Toward personal growth.
In order
To succeed in and out of the classroom.
The mission of Lake Forest Academy.
Is to provide
Opportunity for students.
Learn skills.
That will support
Their success.
In a traditional school setting.
This will include
Development of interpersonal
Interpersonal
Problem-solving.
Decision-making.
And academic skills.
More values.
Relationships are a crucial part of education.
Each person deserves respect and must be given to receive.
All students can learn at their own pace with appropriate supports.
Learning requires effort.
And effort is directly related to success. We believe
Every child is reachable and capable.
A small supportive environment can turn to a tough.
Students have choices.
We work better as a team.
Parents are an integral part of a child's education.
Every child has values of the job.
It is our obligation to provide a safe and caring learning environment.
Hi, I'm Amanda Hellman. I'm the Program Director at Lake Forest Academy for Day Treatment.
And I'm Debbie Stout, Principal at Lake Forest Academy.
And at Lake Forest Academy, we have counselors in every classroom providing mental health and behavioral support for students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. We also have licensed therapists on-site providing comprehensive clinical assessments, crisis intervention support, as well as individual therapy. Coastal Horizons has additional day treatment programs in schools and surrounding counties to us in New Hanover County. We also have been visited by schools in South Carolina who hope to replicate some policies and interventions that we implement here at Lake Forest Academy.
We house the Transition Program for the elementary students here. The purpose of that program is to have an in-between step for our students that are waiting to go into day treatment, or students that have been in hospitals or in higher level of care, and they need to have a step down before they go back to their traditional schools. That is kindergarten through fifth grade here in our building. We have a heavy, heavy emphasis on social-emotional learning in our building. Our kiddos have not been successful typically in their traditional schools, so it's our job to help support them while they're experiencing some success. Social-emotional learning instruction happens daily, and counselors and teachers support in that endeavor. Respect is one of the big pieces that we really focus on. We believe that students have to respect themselves first and foremost in order to respect others, and we also believe that students, if they want to have respect from others, that they also have to give it. We really appreciate you dropping by, and anytime that you would like to tour our building, feel free to contact us, and we'll be glad to schedule it. Thank you.
I do not know who the older lady was at the end with the Southern Drawl, but that's us. Our kiddos split their day with having social skill instruction and academic instruction. Many times, these guys come to us, and they are delayed also in their academic skills because behaviors have gotten in the way. Sometimes short amount, short amount of time, sometimes for several years. Most of the students that come to us stay for about a year, at least. We do have an occasional, occasional eight months, sometimes, bless us, we've got one that I believe he'd stay with us through high school if we kept keeping him, but that's pretty much us. Questions?
Tell us about working with the parents of these children.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Tell us about working with the parents of these children.
So, we meet with families and parents once a month in child and family treatment team meetings. At that time, we review the child's progress, academic and behavioral progress, and we also try to link them while they're here with us to other outside resources, such as additional services, medical services. It could be just linking them to other supports in the community. We also offer a monthly parent group where we provide breakfast and food and gifts to families in addition to giving them kind of a safe space to come, talk about maybe issues that they're having at home.
And network.
And network with one another, and then also linking them to additional resources.
We also have an excellent social worker who is phenomenal with connecting families with whatever their particular need is in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last recognition is for the highest award earned by the Naval Junior Reserve Officers' Training Corps. On the evening of November 5th, this student rapidly and accurately used emergency medical protocols to confirm that his grandfather was suffering from the early stages of a stroke. He alerted 911 and assisted first responders. The hospital neurology team directly credited this cadet with the technical and decision-making skills in saving his grandfather's life. For his prompt actions, personal initiative, and loyal dedication to duty, the NJRTC has awarded the Meritous Achievement Ribbon their highest honor. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Daniel Jerabo from Ashley High School. If Daniel's family is here, we ask that they please stand to be recognized. Congratulations, Cadet. Your district is extremely proud of you. This concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Ms. Clegg, I do want to thank you and the PR team for organizing all these great gifts, and to all the schools and departments that helped to contribute to them. They are beautiful and very welcome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Ms. Kelly's last meeting with us from the PR department. She will be moving on and will be sorely missed, so I wanted to take a moment and just say thank you for your, what you've done for the district.
Yes, thank you, and good luck in your new endeavors. I know you'll do a great job just like you did here, so thank you. Item number five, call to the audience. We do have, at this time, 16 people signed up, so I would need a vote from the board to exceed our 30-minute time limit. Do I hear a motion? Feel moved? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. The first person to sign up is Maggie Guggenheimer.
First want to thank y'all for your service to New Hanover County Schools, and I know the task to redistrict has been an undertaking, and thank you for what you've done to do that. So, I want to address, I'm an educator myself. I was with New Hanover County Schools as a teacher for many years. I worked as the Math and Science Coordinator, and now I work at Watson College of Education. And I have two children in New Hanover County Schools. One is a seventh grader at Noble. We have been redistricted from Noble over to Roland Grace, and it actually makes sense with where we live off of Greenville Loop Road. And I would be in full support for him and my daughter to go to Roland Grace, except for that they're have experience at Noble now. Jack, my son, who's in seventh grade, is in the band with an amazing band teacher that has grown him and taught him the love of music. He has been in the cross-country team. He is on the basketball team with hopes of being a captain next year. He has gotten to know the teachers at the school, the administration. He has a goal to be in the Eagle Society in his eighth grade year, and moving him from the site where he is at such critical school years for him socially, emotionally, academically, in building his independence, time management, would be such a sad event for me to see happen to him. Not that Roland Grace isn't wonderful, but the growth would be stunted to me in all those relationships he's built with coaches, teachers, administration, music teachers. I've got other parents here in support of that with me. They're in exactly the same situation, and they're at other schools and at his school, but sitting in the same situation that I am in. So my request to you is when you go to vote to grandfather-in, fifth and eighth graders, please take into consideration what that type of change at those age levels would do to those kids. It's a one-year commitment to let them stay in the setting that they're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Huffam?
Good evening. My name is Kim Huffam, and I'm the president/CEO of the New Hanover County Tourism Development Authority. On behalf of the tourism and hospitality industry in New Hanover County, I would like to thank you once again for allowing me to speak to you this evening. Since your last meeting in early December, we have met with our industry to update them on the school calendar issue. A small group of tourism professionals also met with Dr. Markley and board member David Wurtman to discuss how changing the school calendar with an earlier start date will have a negative impact on tourism and hospitality. Per their request, we have been gathering information, and we're also in the process of gathering additional necessary research. With two major holidays in December, it created challenges to reach key people who can provide additional resources and statistics. We believe we will be able to gather more data and evidence that will afford both the tourism industry and the Board of Education to be better informed as we reach a hopeful compromise on the school calendar issue. As an industry, we respectfully request you allow us more time to gather vital information that will help us to explore options that have not yet been considered. We do remain hopeful that working with Dr. Markley and the board members, we will find a win-win solution that will allow for testing to be done before Christmas, and will also be in compliance with the law to preserve August, a month that is so very critical to one of the county's top industries, and a month that is of great importance to, to numerous high school students and public school teachers who work in our industry to earn extra income during the month of August. Thank you for your consideration or our request and the opportunity to speak for you. Thank you.
Leslie Cohen? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Most of you know me. I am a candidate for New Hanover County Commission, and I work with some of you on the Title IX Committee. And recently, I have been talking to some of our school bus drivers, and I think everyone who has a child in school or a family member, niece, nephew, grandchild in school is aware of the issues that we have with our school buses. As a child, I rode the bus to school every single day. I had the same school bus driver my entire public school career from elementary all the way through high school, Ms. Harriet. And during that time, I only remember once that the school bus was late. School bus broke down. We talked about it for weeks, the day the school bus didn't come. So when I moved here and I got a phone call from my sister-in-law asking me to take my niece to school because the school bus hadn't come forty-five minutes after it was supposed to be there, I was stunned. And I was even more stunned to find out that this was not an unusual occurrence. And I know you're completely aware that we need to hire more school bus drivers and of all the problems that are going on, and I think every one of our children deserves a Ms. Harriet. She watched me grow up. I knew she was going to be there to take me to school safely and bring me home safely every day, and she was going to be there if one of the older kids was picking on me. She was going to have my back. And as I talked to the bus drivers in New Hanover County, every single one of them is a Ms. Harriet. These people love these kids and care about getting them to and from school safely every single day and on time. But they're frustrated, and if we're going to have a Ms. Harriet for every student in New Hanover County, we need to make sure that we're not just paying our starting bus drivers enough so that they can pay their bills, but we've got to make sure that we take care of these veteran bus drivers so that our kids can have the experience that I had of having that same driver who knew me, who would stop and wait if they saw me running down the sidewalk, running a little late in the morning. So as you listen to these folks speak today, please keep that in mind and take care of them the way Ms. Harriet took care of me. Thank you.
My name is Monique Spugals, and I work for New Hanover County Schools Transportation. As we all know, the cost of living goes up each year. The majority of our staff have to work two jobs or more just to make ends meet, to provide for their families for basic needs such as food, clothing, shelter, among other things. On a regular day, our driver and bus aides arrive, or excuse me, would I say, get up at four-thirty every morning just to arrive to work between five and six o'clock in the morning, and that's when the day begins, from five or six to five to six in the evening. Some have to work in-between the bus route, some have to have mid-days just to make ends meet. Our biggest concern is the dedicated drivers that have been working for years, that love their job, that's been working ten, twenty, thirty years or more, are not even considered when it comes to discussion about pay raises. New people entering the door making more money, or at least a dollar less than the veterans drivers, never considering thoughts and needs of the drivers that's been working in the trenches for years. We love our job, we love our kids, but we want to have a seat at the table as well. My biggest thing is the checks and balances, and allowing us to have a seat at the table and understand we love our job, but we have needs too. And even if new people come in, you don't want to see new faces. You want to see someone, like they said, a dedicated person that's going to give their best and make sure that your kids get to school safe and sound, because we're the first ones that they see first thing in the morning and the last thing in the evening, and we encourage our kids. Thank you for your time. My name is Monique Spugals.
I'm sorry, Quanisha White? My name is Quanisha White. I am a school bus driver with New Hanover County Schools. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. I am asking that you all consider a substantial pay raise for the veteran bus drivers. I do agree with the current raise for the new drivers and the bus aides, but it's unfortunate that the veteran drivers was not given a decent raise. Some drivers who have put in twenty years or more of service did not receive a pay raise at all, while drivers like myself who fell in between fifteen to twenty years of service had an increase of sixteen cent an hour. At the current pay scale, a new driver makes fourteen dollars an hour, and the driver that's been here fifteen years or more makes sixteen eighty-one an hour, a difference of two dollars and eighty-one cents. On that same pay scale, bus aides who have been here fifteen years or more makes fifteen seventy-six an hour, only a doll, a dollar and five cent less than a driver. With that being said, I do feel that aides are very important. Their job is very important. I am a driver that has an aide. Their job is very important. Our job as a driver is important in their same aspect, but we have a lot on our plate. We are driving, we are watching the children, we are watching the traffic, we are trying to keep the kids to get off safely with their parents. All of this is put in, put on a driver, not to mention paperwork that is due, and we're not being compensated for this. The cost of living in New Hanover County is on a constant rise, and but our pay is not compatible with this rise. It is a constant struggle just to make ends meet on a month-to-month basis. As a veteran driver, I feel as if we are not thought of, or neither is our job respected. We are the first face the children see, the last they see in the afternoon, and I feel our contribution to New Hanover County Schools as a bus driver is just as valuable as any other title in the school system. I love my job, I love my children, and I think I'm important in their life. I'm asking that you see my value as long, as well as my coworkers' value as a bus driver and a bus aide. We need to be compensated, just as well as everybody else in the school system. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. I am Kristy Moore. I'm the vice president of the North Carolina Association of Educators. Tonight, I stand with the New Hanover Bus Drivers and Bus Aides. It was absolutely wonderful to see the absolutely amazing children here in New Hanover County, so thank you for allowing me to see that. But what's important is they get to school. What's important is they get to school safely, and they cannot do that without bus drivers and aides who are paid the right wage to be on that bus at four AM and make sure that they get off the bus at six, and make sure everything is there and in order. So when you have veteran bus drivers who have shown you respect, you need to show that respect back to them, and make sure that you are paying them the wages that they need so maybe they can actually live in the county where they love to drive a bus and interact with students each and every day. They are the first line of defense before educators, teachers get them in the classroom. They know whether that child got on the bus happy or sad. They know whether that house was boarded up or not when they picked them up. They know maybe if that child has not eaten in two days. The bus drivers know this, and they can tell the teacher, so when the teachers get them in the classroom, they know that child needs a little extra attention today. And the last person that that child sees every day is a bus driver and a bus aide. So they've been showing you respect for many years, showing up every day, not getting the pay they deserve. Now it's time for you, school board members, to show them respect and give them the pay they deserve. New Hanover County is beautiful. It's a tourist attraction, but you have people who are dedicated to you that cannot even live in the county they work because they are not getting paid enough, and they're taking care of our most precious and most valuable resource, our children, and giving them that each and every day. So the North Carolina Educators Association will stand with the bus drivers, with the aides, and we will make sure that they're getting what they deserve because they're doing what you're asking them to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eva Morris, and I am a bus aide in New Hanover County School District. I've been working there for quite some time. I've seen changes. New Hanover County is growing, and we got many children in our district that really, really need help, and we see that on the bus. They can't sit still, they come on the bus with problem. And being a bus aide is not just what I do on the bus. I'm a mother, I'm a caregiver, I am a teacher, someone wants you to read to them, someone wants you to sit with them, someone can find their secret to you. It's a lot, and it's very stressful, and the traffic is getting so heavy. So I know years ago, bus driver used to be bus aide and driver. They cannot do that anymore because the traffic here in New Hanover County is so, so thick. You know what I mean? You have to keep your eyes on the road. You don't want any accident, you don't want your kids unsafe on the bus, so you need an aide to make sure those kids are seated, are sitting still, I mean, are not talking, are not moving. Kids have a habit of kneeling on their knees, turning around, talking, and if a driver has to stop that bus suddenly, those kids going up. So it's a job that we have to observe on the bus. We have to constantly observe all of the children, and some of the buses have seventy children or more, so that's a lot of children. With one bus aide, that's a lot. And so you don't want any of your children hurt. I'm a mother, I love the children that I work with, and I want to see that they get to school safe, I want to see that they get home safe, and I'm going to pay attention to them, even if I have to get out my seat and walk up and down the aisle, because those kids to me is like my kids. I love them like I love my own kids. So it's very important to me to see that they are safe while I'm on the bus. So I'm asking you to please look at your budget, because we work hard and we love our work. I come to work many days, don't feel well, but I love my children, I love my job, and I will be there if I can. So please, take the time, look at your budget, and please compensate us, because we deserve it. We don't want to handout. We work for what we want, and we want you to compensate us like we should be. I thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Evan Scott Pollak? No?
My name is Stephanie Walker, and I have been both a mother to children and a child myself in the public schools here in New Hanover County, and I'm here to speak in support of the bus drivers. I recently got the opportunity to meet some of these wonderful, dedicated, and hardworking people, and I've concluded that they have some very valid concerns that need addressing. A couple of these concerns include pay disparities, especially concerning veteran drivers, and inconsistent policies and practices across divisions. This has taken a toll on their morale. I brought copies of the North Carolina General Assembly Study that was completed in April of 2018 in regards to school bus driver compensation and employment. This study highlights similar issues throughout the state and validates many of our local drivers' concerns. It also includes some potential solutions. Tabitha has copies for you all if you don't already have them. I'm sure you can all understand. I'm sure you can all understand on a personal level that you don't normally speak up about something unless you've gotten to a point where it becomes necessary. The fact is, they wouldn't be here speaking out publicly if their concerns were not urgent and vital to their livelihoods. I know it took personal bravery for these drivers to speak out, so I believe it's imperative that they be heard because their concerns are valid. Try to walk a mile in their shoes. Because this issue is unlikely to go away without consideration from this board, I recommend forming a committee to investigate the various issues and concerns the bus drivers have. In my observations, these concerns could reach a breaking point, so it is vital that they are heard. I know they would welcome members here today to meet with them in order to resolve these issues. Bus drivers do one of the most important jobs, delivering our children to and from school safely, which includes driving in this horrible Wilmington traffic, and I'm sure you all can understand that. Thank you very much for your time.
Bill Baggett? Bill Baggett? Susan Bullock?
Good evening, school board. I'm Susan Bullock. I'm here with the tourism industry, and I'm simply here to say thank you. Kim has said it all. We look forward to working with you over the next year and finding solutions that will benefit both the children in our school system and our industry. Thank you.
Dallas Brown? Dallas Brown? Vandorian Karmarty? Vandorian Karmarty? Sean Bynum? Marcus Laiswell?
Hello. I want to start off. I came in December for when y'all voted on having the redistricting. I came just to receive more information on the whole thing. And I did, and I was always raised that do not discriminate anything unless you come up with a solution. So at- just right after the meeting, I contacted each of you about a proposal for y'all to consider about a class administrative school or something as a pilot to switch schools with a different cultural administrative school. So they will be exposed to a different learning style and also to a different atmosphere. I say that because education does not only involve textbooks, it involves how you interact with your community. And every community has areas in it. All those areas may put education on the forefront and rewarded with high-paying jobs. Others have to put survival and head education. And example of this is, say, Ogden and Castle Hain. They have different concerns that they have to deal with. So they promote different characteristics and things of that nature. As children, you pick this up and you don't understand why they have this way until you get to know them and get over there to see what they have to deal with. It's different with you to have to. And this time, you don't actually get to see that and interact with somebody different until you get to high school or middle school. And by that time, they already have their assumptions of people. And by that age, you have discrimination, prejudice, and hate is growing. And in the military, everybody in the military, I don't know about now, but before, it's like everyone will be like, well, I didn't know y'all were like this, or I didn't know y'all like that. And it's a shame they had to find out that late in their life. Many people now are finding things out, how other people are in different places when they're in college or in school credit or they get in the military. And that's kind of late, because they have school shootings and high school and middle school, elementary things of that nature. And to be just- I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Joe Finley?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Finley. I'm one of the co-founders of Castle Branch and Tech Mountain. And tonight, I'm here representing a group called Community Conversations, essentially a local grassroots initiative that is really concerned about the inequities that exist in our public school system. And it's a group of people who are looking at ways that we can change this, looking at ways that we can work with each of you to change this in our community, because we're all in this together. Less than a month ago, our group put together a document that we submitted to each of you talking about some of these issues that we see within the school system that we'd like to see addressed. And then we talked about some of the goals that we'd like to see as well within the school system. And we haven't heard back from any of you as far as concretely yet about how we can address these things, but we do look forward to hearing that. And within that document, we were supported by many other organizations. It's not just a few people. We have representatives from the hospital that were part of this document, our largest employer here in town. My organization hires four hundred employees right now, and we've been in this town since 2004. So we are- there's employers involved in this. There's nonprofits such as Step Up, the Boys Brigade, NAACP, the YWCA, many, many local pastors and community activists who are looking at what's going on and saying, we can change things in our town. The issues that we're looking at around equity, you know, they really are dealing with these Title I schools that we continue to have struggles with. You guys know the struggles better than I do that we have in those schools, but we are not succeeding. And I think we can all know that we're not succeeding, especially the way that we can succeed as a community and that the way we've succeeded in so many other ways in this town. I think that if we can look to address those things again together and look at ways that we can solve and come towards these goals together, then we truly can make a difference. And I want to read through some of these goals that we have. Prepare all children in the school system to compete for academic and vocational opportunities. Increase the representation of minority students in academically gifted programs. Raise the performance of all schools to an A or a B. Not subtle. Raise it to all. Create Title I schools that are therapeutically equipped to serve the emotional, social, and educational needs of the students. These are tough things. There's no doubt about it. I'm not saying these are easy things for you guys to accomplish, but I know that communities have done this, and I know that communities are tackling this, and I know that we can tackle this together. I don't have to tell you, there is a history in this town of racial inequity that goes back hundreds and hundreds of years that has continued to thrive in this town. There have been huge events that have happened in this town historically that have continued to push down the African-Americans in our community. The school system is just a byproduct of this in many, many ways. But together, I do believe that this generation of individuals and each and every one of you, we can make a difference with this, guys. I do believe this. I'm committed to working with you. I know Rebecca is. I know there are many others in those organizations that are committed to the same thing. I hope you'll work with us in solving these problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone that spoke tonight. Item six, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendation, Penex W., Dr. Wellmers.
Actually, I've got this one. We have a recommendation tonight for Title I supervisor, and that is Melanie Rhine. Currently, Ms. Rhine serves as the instructional coach at Sunset Park Elementary. Previously served as an intensive academic support teacher and a first-grade teacher at Sunset Park and has experience with the Brunswick County Schools. She received her bachelor's degree in elementary ed and a master's in language and literacy from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington, and it is my pleasure to recommend Melanie for the position of Title I supervisor.
Is it Rhine or Rhym?
Rhine. If I mispronounce that, she is here. She can correct me.
With an N or an M?
R-H-Y-N-E.
Okay, sorry, spelled Rhym down here. Okay. Is there a motion to prove the recommendation? No motion?
I just had a couple of questions. Is this a new position?
No. We had a person who left the position. Jackie, it's- will report to Ms. Dr. Jethro. You want to speak to the position?
Yes, sir. I had a Title I supervisor that retired. I had a Title I supervisor that retired on December 31st, and so will be filling that role. In addition to that, we had an NC Star Specialist that was Mr. Askea Kirby, who is now the principal of Williston. And so knowing that the retirement was coming, we did not fill the NC Star Specialist position, and I rewrote the job description, combining the two so that we could fill the position with one person that would be able to support both roles.
And how is the position funded? Is it local?
It's all Title I.
Title I funding. And so what- I'm just curious, what is the types of responsibilities for the supervisor role?
Sure. We- and I actually get to talk to you guys in a little bit about finding solutions with federal money. This position supports the monitoring, all the compliance, the data documentation. There are thirty-nine elements that Title I schools must show proof of and documentation of throughout the year, so it's not one piece of documentation for each element. It's multiple. We also partner with private schools. We share a proportionate share of our federal funds with them. We don't actually give the private schools the money. We facilitate the use of those funds to create school improvement with them. So I need someone that visits the private schools, that monitors, that participates. And also, because federal programs is very much combined with instruction, supporting principals in their school improvement planning so that their school improvement goals are very aligned and very matched with the way that they spend their funds. I can keep going. Parent family engagement. That's a required 1% expenditure. We're very mindful of how we do that well.
Is this the only- I know we have a lot of Title I schools. Is this the only supervisor position we currently have?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and her background is instructional coaching, which this is a lot of accountability interaction with the schools. A lot of schools. I've actually done a little of this.
Yes, ma'am. We really want everything they do and the focus to be instructional.
Instructional coaching, that's where she's working one-on-one with the teachers and the students on a regular basis to improve their school- well, just improve our learning. That's a little bit- a lot different, actually, than what this position is.
Right. Well, as I said, I rewrote the two. The NC Star Specialist, as we originally hired Mr. Kirby for, was really helping schools build action steps in school improvement. So this is really a combination of the two.
Could you put- somebody just took her background down. Could you put that back up, please? What was the application process? I'm just curious. As far as who- who would we see?
We post- we post on our website and other sites. It's open to anybody to apply?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Typically, it's a ten-day posting?
Okay. I mean, she looks like an excellent background. It's just a difference in this type of position and what she's doing now is very different. And I was just, you know, just trying to find out, you know, did- how many people and I'm- you know, I'm just giving you my input here.
Is there an onboarding plan as far as training goes?
Absolutely. I- when I do hire someone new, I recently hired a new lead math and a new lead ELA teacher as both of those people went on to other positions. I do an orientation with them, talk about the way that we work with principals, the way that we work with schools, the way that we communicate with principals. And again, a big part of that for me now is NC Star, which is our school improvement process. NC Star is based on indicators of school success, and the majority of those are instructional. So when we see schools and principals build school improvement plans, we really want their action steps to all be aligned and go in that direction. So her background as the instructional coach, I really- that is definitely a role I want her to fill. I want to use those strengths.
Does she use NC Star now from her location?
Yes, ma'am. She's the process manager at Sunset Park.
How much training would this involve? Because you said there's two different positions. Say those two positions again, if she's fulfilling, if you combine.
I really have every confidence that with her background as the instructional coach and as the process manager, that this is going to go very smoothly in terms of her transition and being able to work with the rest of the instructional team.
How long ago did the other- the person holding the previous position retire?
I think she was with me for two years.
I mean, how long ago did she retire?
Her last day was December 31st.
Well, taking your recommendation, I move that we accept Lena Rainey? Raine for the position?
Melanie Rhine. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said I move that we accept her for the position.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. Ms. Rhine, would you stand up and introduce yourself or let folks see who you are?
Hi, I'm Melanie Rhine, and I'm excited to start this position and just help the county in new ways and right now. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Want to take five before this or?
Yep. It would be nice to take a five-minute break, so we will do so at this time. Thank you.